Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Southwestern City School District Board of Education. The board welcomes and values your comments and the time set aside during first regular meeting in the month for public participation. So all concerns may be heard, please observe the following rules for public participation. Only three people may speak on the same topic. Each speaker may take up to five minutes to address the board, and then each speaker may not reflect adversely on the individuals. If a parent or community member has a complaint about employees, should be referred to the employee supervisor. For tonight's meeting, there were no signups to address the board concerning non-agenda items, so we'll only be affording opportunity for public participation for items relative to tonight's agenda. As a reminder, public participation is an opportunity for the community to address the board in a formal setting, however, is not designed or intended to be interactive. While we greatly appreciate the individuals engaging with us, we expect the administrative and building level staff to work cooperatively with the community to address items discussed. We also request the audience members be respectful to each participant and the process. We thank you for attending tonight's meeting in the Board of Education, and thank you for your support of our school system.
Stand and join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, we're going to call this Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Bosso?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Ms. Martindale?
Mr. Schreiner?
Here.
Mr. Caldwell?
Here.
And be remiss if I did not say Happy Staff Appreciation Week, we're celebrating. Next, entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So move, Schreiner.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner, a second.
Second, then.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Any changes to the agenda? During none, roll call, please. Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell? Yes. In our packet tonight, there are the approval from the minutes from the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
They'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, can I have a second?
Second, Schreiner.
Mr. Schreiner, any changes, additions, or corrections to the minutes? During none, clear roll call, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
All right, great. Next, we'll go to presentations, and first, we're going to have recognition of one of our amazing, amazing Southwestern Career Academy students, Bella Maddox.
Evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, Mr. Bosso, Mrs. Johnson, and Mrs. Martindale, Dr. Weiss, and Mr. Garza. As Executive Director of Communications Forum, and whatever the outlet ends, ends up being digital-wise or in print, this evening, I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to introduce Mr. Jay Demasso from our Southwestern Career Academy as the Interactive Media Design Instructor, who has a special presentation with some background information for a national winner we'd like to recognize.
Today, I'd like to recognize Bella Maddox. Bella, come on up. Bella is an Interactive Media Design Senior at the Southwestern Career Academy and also a senior at Through Grove City High School. Bella is a four-point-O student in our lab and a three-eight cumulative GPA. During her time in the Interactive Media Design, she has served as the class president both years and is also the BPA Chapter President for our building. During her time in Interactive Media Design, she has earned forty-five college credit hours in the Interactive Media Design career field, as well as additional college credit plus through her other academics, as well as sixteen certifications points for her career tech, and state certifications in Adobe, Photoshop, Illustrator, Premiere, and After Effects. All four of those are state credentials. Furthering that, she has also earned about two hundred hours in workplace learning and work-based learning skills and activities through her correlation and connection with workplaces and/or in our particular in-house program. As she continued her adventures into the Business Professionals of America, she is a two-time state qualifier for her one time for her junior year and then her senior year, as well as her senior year, she qualified in multiple events, so had to make a choice. She also then was a national qualifier in the Promotional Photography Competition, which is what brings us here today. During those times and all of those BPA endeavors and events, she's done superior, excellent things. This particular one caused her to have to compete against four hundred and fifteen students, and that was narrowed down to the top twenty, who then had a presentation interview of their particular work, identifying why you chose a composition, the thematics behind it, color, contrast, and all the other things that go along with photography guidelines. She was then awarded the opportunity to go to the National Leadership Conference, where she was on showcasing display at a national event to show her work, and then we got up on stage, not knowing what was going on, you know, that ranking to attend on there, and then, then they called Bella Maddox. Bella is the two thousand twenty-three Promotional Photography National Champion for Business Professionals of America.
Put you on the spot, didn't it?
Yeah. I'm going to cry, this is awesome, and I'm so happy to be here. I'm a very emotional person, I'm sorry. Um, the photo that I took meant a lot to me, and being able to go out to California especially was amazing, number one, but also being able to showcase it and show people from around the world what I did, and to be able to have a plaque on my wall showing that I won first place, well, it's absolutely amazing, it was the best feeling ever, and the amount of energy that I've had for like the, for this week and last week, and the weekend was immaculate, because I just, I can't like shake it, it's the biggest thing ever, and I'm so happy that I joined in, I'm so happy that I'm here to be able to be recognized and to be able to win it, and I just, I'm just so happy. Yes.
I don't think it's going to be the same quality.
Other view. But the morning worked, didn't it?
Yeah. Thank you.
I used to be in behind the camera.
Yes. All right. I feel like. Congratulations.
Congratulations again, Bella, we're very proud of you. Next, we have our fifth presentation, which is our five-year forecast with our trigger, Mr. Hugh Garza.
Wow, that's kind of a hard. That's impressive, so that's really awesome. It's just a reminder why we all are sitting here. President Caldwell, members of the board, it's that time of year to update the five-year forecast. This is a reminder, each year, we have to present a forecast either in October, November, that's our first submission, and then we also, by law, have to submit one A. So this is that submission. Throughout the year, if your forecast is off, or it's going to be off by five percent or more on the revenue side or the expenditure side, you also have to refile one. If I can tell you about this forecast is that we're still within the parameters of where we thought we would be at forecast, so this is just our normal filing. Go ahead and go to the first slide, that slide. All right, so we are projected to have a positive cash balance of three to six months throughout the forecast. This meets or exceeds our metric that we have. As you know, when we talk about our five-year forecast, we want to be somewhere within three to six months of operating expenditures to our cash balance, and we are in that sweet spot right now, and that's a good place to be. If we ever have any financial issues, we can draw on our cash reserves to meet those and then plan accordingly for the future, so it's always good to have a nice cash balance, and that's where we are. Also, as you can see from this graph, you can see that the cash balance is declining, that's that gold bar that's going across the middle, but we do have a positive cash balance at the end of the entire forecast for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. The reason why that gold bar is going, going down is our revenues are not keeping up with our expenditures throughout this forecast, but I do have some other insights on that that I'm going to talk about on the next slide. So just overall highlights of the forecast, as I said, it's a conservative approach. Our overall revenues and expenditures are within the two percent margin that I expect to happen when we presented in October. The cash balance is going to be a little bit better than anticipated from the October forecast, about four point five percent better, or eleven million dollars. So that's, that's on a good pace, where we want to be. And also, what I, what I also have noted is that the investment earnings, that's really where we made up some ground. The overall interest rate has increased roughly three percent from July twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, our average interest rate. So if you look at that same timeframe last year, that up through this April, we've earned six million dollars in interest in the general fund. Same timeframe last year, April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, we'd only received five hundred thousand dollars interest through that same timeframe. So five and a half million dollars more in interest earned on our dollars, so that's, that's impressive, that's, you know, nothing magical that we've done, the market has gone up, so having those ones on reserve has really helped us at this point. We'll go to the next slide. Okay, so this is talking a little bit more about fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The forecast as presented right now, and the column is twenty, the twenty twenty-four column, that's the next budget year. The revenues are based on what is currently law. The cost factors, the base cost formula is based on twenty eighteen cost inputs, and it also includes a phase in of year three and four, which would be the Fair School Funding Plan phase in at fifty percent in twenty twenty-four and sixty-seven percent in twenty twenty-five. So the House has already proposed, and we're hopeful, hopeful that this keeps moving through the Senate and then the Joint Committee, and then on to the signature of the Governor, is that the twenty-two cost, base cost formula we used, with also the phase in and places. If we look at those, that plan, and the simulations that we've perceived so far from the LSC, show that we would have about a twelve point seven million dollar increase in funding in fiscal year twenty-four, and a sixteen point six million dollar increase in twenty twenty-five. So remember that graph that we showed right off the bat, where we had decreasing revenues or decreasing cash balances, decreasing our revenues, we're outpacing our expenditures, that will help bridge that gap, so that, that's a good place to be. We're very hopeful that this state budget goes through in that way with the twenty-two cost sets. So I've been making a lot of calls, been talking to a lot of people, and I'm also, I also sit on the OASBO Education Finance Committee, and we've really been pushing towards making sure that this formula gets put in place. The Fair School Funding Formula is one that has, is much better than anything we've had in the past. There's some old terms I was going to bring up, phantom, phantom funding, phantom revenue. We also had times where we're on when our funding was, was stopped, we couldn't gain any dollars on increased students. And so this formula, if we have additional students coming to our district, which I, you know, if you see all the construction going on and the things are going in central Ohio, we probably will have increased enrollment, and the dollars that will be tied to those dollars will come with those students, so that's a good thing. On the expenditure side, our operating levels, for our operating expenditures, I predict will be about four percent next year, or eleven point seven million. Salaries and benefits are our biggest cost driver, we are in the people business, about eighty percent of our budget goes towards salaries and benefits. So we have dollars locked in for our, our three employee groups through twenty twenty-five. And so we know what those costs most likely will be, you know, people change on the schedule, but overall, we know pretty much where those should be, and have budgets for those. We are monitoring our health insurance premiums, there is a national push that health insurances premiums are going up significantly. We are self-insured, so we, our claims, our bills, so we have to make sure that we're keeping up with that. We just had a meeting with our Health Insurance Committee that we all work together as a team to try to keep those costs down. We're looking at some strategies to try to do so, but I just want to put that on the radar that we are looking at possibly a pretty significant increase in health insurance premium, so I just wanted to make sure everybody do that. And I have used those factors, and I've put those in the forecast, so we are planning for that, and the only thing that could happen is that could get a little bit better for us, so hopefully that does, that will ease up our budget. The fiscal twenty-four column that you see on the forecast that you've been presented is what you'll be provided at the June twenty-sixth Board of Education meeting. That one will be in the morning, we have that every year to close the fiscal books and also approve the next year budget. So you'll be getting that at that point, that's when everything will be tied up and, and a vote for you to, to approve. Any questions on the, either the forecast or the budget update for next full year, for everybody on the next slide? Okay, the next slide is, is, you haven't seen the numbers for this one yet, it's the Franklin County comparison, I showed, I show this every couple times a year. This one's updated with a few things, it's updated with the coverage for fiscal twenty-two, which gives you the expenditure per pupil amount, and it also is updated for the new millage rates that were put in place after the tax bills went out and the first of the year. Overall, you will see that the, if you're looking at, if you're looking at this graph, the first column is all, all millage that the district collects for every school district in Franklin County. So that means if you have a bond issue, a PI levy, or operating dollars, that includes every single levy that a school district has levied to their taxpayers. We are in the same spot we were at the last time I showed you this, we're currently in thirteenth place. I'm in a seventh place, we're currently thirteenth in the county is what we tax our taxpayers. And if you look at our effective operating mills, just for our taxpayers, our homeowners, we are fourteenth. Those two numbers, if you look at those numbers, the last time I showed you those, our overall millage rate has gone down one mil, one point oh three to be exact, and our operating millage rate has gone down point two two mils. Now, that can be confusing to some people, we had this reappraisal thing that's going to be coming forward, and you hear that the rates are, the appraisal amounts are going up pretty high. What will happen is our millage rate will go down as, as values go up, millage rate goes down. Now, what I will tell you is, people can get a little confused about this concept, it doesn't mean everybody's taxes are going, going down or staying the same, but what will happen is it's, it's really just, it's, it's really just redistributing who pays what on the, the overall tax bill for the school district. So let's say the average is thirty percent. An increase in Southwestern City Schools, if your property goes up thirty percent, you will pay the same taxes that you paid the previous year. If your value, if your home went up fifty percent and the average is thirty, you're going to pay something more. If you're, if it's thirty and you went up only ten percent, you actually get a decrease in your taxes, so that, that's how reappraisal really works, it's a redistribution. And people, where people get kind of caught, get caught up a little bit is that when the, when the values go up, they think they're, they think the the value goes up thirty percent, they're going to pay thirty percent more, that, that's just not true. Call the county auditor if you don't believe what I'm saying, so. I will show it, when this gets a little closer, when we have the exact numbers, I will have a really nice graph that kind of shows how that works and prove that point out. Now, that last column is our per pupil expenditure amount, we were twelfth in the county before, we're twelfth in the county now, and actually, we spend less than the state average, so Southwestern City Schools, I believe, because we do have a lot of economies of scale and ability to provide a good quality education at a, at a reasonable price, I think this is a, this is proof that shows that we're, we're in a good spot, we really are. And I like showing this, this graph because it, it helps our community realize where they are, so I've always have provided this and continue to private, provide it in the future. Any questions on that graph?
Just the way you presented, I would say that we have the fourth best tax rate in the first chart, the third best, you know.
I would, I would agree with you. Any questions? I really appreciate your support, and we'll just continue chugging along, and I'll be back in, in October to provide a new one piece, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Garza? Just one comment that I'll make, I would encourage every taxpayer in our community to go to Frank County Auditor's website, they'll have informal hearing, well, first, you're going to send out tentative values for everyone for the property tax increase, and then after that, you know, there are going to be informal meetings you can have with the auditor's office, to see what that impact your taxes can be like, you know, to argue whether or not the value is the right or not right, and then those final, final values, I think, from December, right? Yeah, so reappraisal process is happening now, so I would definitely check that out, frank countyauditor.com, to see how it impacts your home debt. Move on to board reports, any board reports tonight? Right, here in none, public participation relative to agenda items, first, we're going to have Mr. Mike Dingoldine.
Thank you. Spent a lot of time here, but tonight I have a different hat on, I'm here with Mr. Don Swager, he is the Chair of the Grove City Food Pantry Board, and I have volunteered to help them work on a potential location at the former Kirk Park Middle School. So the city has engaged us in order to help do some due diligence, we also engaged GP Engineering to look at electrical and mechanical, we, we relearned all the challenges that come with that old middle school, but we're sitting here tonight, and you're, on your agenda is talking about entering into an agreement with the city. So Chuck Bosso, the city manager, asked us to come give you this update. We've done, I would say seventy percent of our due diligence to, to look at moving in there and having logistics there, having an outlet there, using the kitchen there, using the walk-in coolers and freezers there, and we're just excited to do that, and we're not necessarily guaranteed that we're through all of our due diligence, but we feel like we're in a good place, and I'll let Don do the rest of the update.
What we want to do is, you know, move into the cafeteria and the kitchen area, add a couple of classrooms for storage. We're currently in the old parsonage there at the United Methodist Church. They've been very good letting us use that building for about the last twelve years. And when we started out there, we were serving about twelve families per day. Currently, we're serving twenty-five to thirty a day. And when the pandemic hit, we went to a, just a drive-through, no, no contact. And we'd like to get back into where the customer can come in and actually pick out their food. Because right now, of course, we give them, you know, they might get a can of spinach and, lots of many kids like that. And so it either goes in the trash, or, you know, we get it back in the next food drive. And so with this year, we'd be able to do a walkthrough, where they can come in, they'd be assigned how much food they're allowed in each category, and pick out, you know, what their family would need. And we see where a lot less weight when we do something like that. That's where we're at, if we get this approved and get the lease worked out, then, you know, hopefully, we can get some construction started to redo what has to be done to make it accessible for the families to come through, and, you know, of course, keep out the rest of the building, then just keep where they need to be. Also, we'd like to put in a way to back our truck up, then actually unload it more convenient. Right now, we do it outside, rain, snow, doesn't matter, we have a good crew of volunteers. We're all volunteering, except that we have three paid staff, we have a manager, assistant manager, and then a guy that cleans the floors and stuff. You know, we want to keep it that way, it'd have been an all volunteer, I've been there since two thousand and four, but I give some of it up, age and health. My back doctor don't like me lifting anymore after he's corrected my back four times in surgery, and he kind of yells at me when I fix something up, so I got to get out of it, but we've got a good crew, and we're picking up a lot more items from stores, all the local retailers support us, it's all through mid-Ohio, we've picked up a lot of the local stores, Krogers, fires, all of them, Target, and that's where all the food comes, and donations. Also, the schools, you guys do that white Christmas food drive, and I tell you what, it's major support, that is our biggest food drive. Same way with the postal drive, that's about the second biggest food drive that'll be going on this weekend, and you know, so something like that would sure make a difference, and I think it'd really help out the community. If something happens, you know, they decide to move the building into a bigger community center or something, we've requested, be able to stay right with it, continue, you know, working with the city and the community, and we serve Grove City, Harrisburg, Orient, and Galloping. But Grove City is our biggest, I'd say eighty percent of our, the clients come from Grove City, well, the four-three-one-two-three, and everything is through Southwest School District's incomes. So that's where we're at, and hopefully, this will be approved tonight, sort of continue with working with the city, and of course, if you have any extra funding. We're going to need quite a bit to put things in there, so anything the school board could do to, you know, help out would be wonderful. Any questions, or?
Don, this isn't supposed to be interactive, I just have one question for the stand-up hunger food drive, you said that's this weekend?
Yes.
So we just put our bagged canned foods by our mailbox on Saturday morning?
On Saturday morning, and the postman is supposed to pick it up, and then what they do is, when their route is finished, they stop their pantry and drop it off.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our last speaker for public participation for agenda items is going to be Denise D'Angelo Steele.
I always forget when to start, it's only my second time, when do I start, I just start talking, you go. All right, yes, hi, I am Mrs. Denise D'Angelo Steele, some of you may know me, I'm Dr. Devo from our PTA interactions, and, you know, I am always seeking clarification, you know, this is not I know this a little bit. Okay. Anyway, you guys know that I'm always looking for clarification when there are things I don't fully understand. And with children in this school, I like to know as much as possible about this whole environment. So I was curious about some things, and I came across some policies that are being proposed by Mrs. Johnson today that are for a second and final reading. I like to focus on the policy seven-five-four-zero dot zero-three, Student Technology Acceptable Use and Safety. In this, it says, "The district will implement protection measures that protect against filter or block access to visual displays, materials that are obscene, constitute child pornography, and/or are harmful to minors, as defined by the Children's Internet Protection Act." I like this, I had to give pros for that, I really like that you guys have this set up. Can this please be used to help protect our students in the public libraries as well? If there's a Children's Internet Protection Act for online safety, is there one for real life to protect our students from pornography and visual displays of seen materials? The amount of awful content out there our students have access to in person and on the internet is actually really horrendous. I know Mr. Bosso and Mrs. Martindale have students in grades K through twelve, who know what day-to-day life is like with tech and kids. Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Schreiner, I'm not sure you still have little ones for a few years now, and the tech we have had in the last five, ten, and fifteen years is not the same tech we had, not the same tech we have today. Which brings me to the AI section, I'm assuming you guys have all read these policies, and you read through that huge new AI policy, AI, which is half of this green, it's a lot, it's a lot, many adults have no idea what this AI is. Now, I like seeing that the AI and NLP shall be regulated. Now, I like seeing that the AI and NLP shall be regulated. However, if all a student needs to do is ask a teacher for AI access, how is that access being given? It's not described in here. Again, I know many of you do not have children in school right now, so you may not know the ins and outs of everything. For example, there is a program that has been used in the district for eight years now called iReady. There are many flaws to this. Not enough time to go into detail, of course, but the one issue that can apply to this is the oversight. Once a child is tested out of the subject, the teachers often have no idea. The student will have to tell the teacher that they need to be updated and placed out of that category. Not all students know how to do this. iReady has been around for eight years, it has many flaws and a huge lack of knowledge all around still. Why are you considering giving access to programs that need even more oversight? We can't cover what we already have in place. How are we going to add this new AI system? Before implementing any new technology in the school system, there needs to be a system set up to handle this technology. I really want to know how you're going to do that. How many of you have been on ChatGPT this last month? Anybody try, is this, is this what we're talking about? Is this the AI that we're talking about, is ChatGPT? And they can't answer me. I wish you could talk back. Let me know, I have some, you know, answers questions. They're reading over these policies. It sounds as if you know there is an unknown with the AI and the natural language processing tools. And then this is a threat to the school system. The policy states, "AI NLP tools can be effectively used as supplement to and not a replacement for traditional learning methods." Again, read over this. Think about what is written in this policy. AI can do it all. The examples of reasons to allow usage of the AI and NLP are overall very silly. My kids are cracking up this weekend and we're just, it's just, it's just silly. Um, you don't need to use AI to help with social media. But why do the kids even have access to social media? Social media, kids have access to social media and then they can use AI in order to analyze and understand it for them. Okay? And the NLP portion, I wish I could talk to my Spanish teachers, Mrs. Curtis and Miss Colmes, right? If they knew there's a program out there to translate my English to Spanish, they would pull, my name is Socorro. They pulled me aside and said, "You cannot be doing this. You're not learning on your own. You're not doing the legwork." This may seem like minor questions to many of you who don't have children in the school system right now. These are not the same schools, not the same stuff. This is very scary. The technology and social media the students have access to right now is way too much. There's no reason to file more logs on the fire when it's already not contained and out of control. If you truly care about the students and their future, you should definitely question these policies. These technological paths may be where society is going, and I understand that. However, if this is the route you're going to go, you need to have more than what is just written in these policies going forward for the protection and safety of the students. Thank you.
For your time, your comments. Next, we'll have our legislative liaison report with President Schreiner.
Thank you, President Caldwell. Uh, I'm highlighting, uh, a number of items. There is certainly more than I will be addressing tonight. Um, out of the week, week of April twenty-fourth, a budget update. The House Finance Committee accepted the omnibus amendment for House Bill thirty-three, the biennial budget for fiscal years twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. Following its passage out of committee, House Bill thirty-three was sent to the House Board for a vote on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth. The bill passed seventy-seven to nineteen and was sent now to the Senate. A Senate activity, the Senate unanimously passed Senate Bill forty-nine sponsored by, well, I, I'm not even going to mention the sponsors. I'll skip that, which would enact the Religious Expression Days, which are now known as RED, Red Act, and require school boards to adopt a policy providing students with religious accommodations for up to three days. The Senate Education Committee, uh, held testimony on the biennial budget for fiscal years twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. House Primary and Secondary Education Committee, the committee held sponsor testimony on House Bill thirty, thirty-eight, which would allow school districts to permit students to take up to three mental health days away from school each school year. The committee held a third hearing on House Bill eleven, which would establish the backpack scholarship program beginning in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The bill would also repeal the Educational Choice voucher program and the Cleveland voucher program on July first, twenty-twenty-four. The House Economic and Workforce Development Committee held a third hearing on Senate Bill one, which would rename the Department of Education as the Department of Education and Workforce, or DEW, and would create the position of Director of Education and Workforce. The bill also wouldn't reform the functions and responsibilities of the State Board of Education and the Superintendent of Public Instruction in Ohio. The House Health Provider Services, the committee passed House Bill forty-seven, which would require the placement of automated external defibrillators, AEDs for short, in each public and chartered non-public school and each public recreational facility. The bill would also require the Ohio Department of Health to develop a modern, uh, excuse me, a model emergency action plan for use of all, uh, ABDs. Testimony opportunities, if you're interested. The Senate Education Committee will be holding hearings for public testimony on House Bill thirty-three, the biennial budget, uh, tomorrow, on Tuesday, May ninth at three o'clock, and Wednesday, May tenth at four o'clock, and Thursday, May eleventh at eleven AM if needed. They will be accepting proponent, opponent, and interested party testimony during these hearings. And finally, the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee, uh, which would eliminate retention under the third grade reading guarantee and expand the grades for which intensive reading intervention is provided. The bill also modifies the English Language Arts Assessment to be administered once in the third grade and expands the inclusion of phonics in learning standards. Mr. President, after reviewing, uh, these items, or, uh, this ends my report. I guess that's, that's easy to say it. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. Lots going on in the legislature, that's going to be public education right now. So those of you who read our meeting minutes, I always encourage folks to go back and look at the thing that he wasn't able to cover. Uh, because Mr. Schreiner provides very comprehensive report of all things. Uh, next, our student staff and achievement liaison report, uh, with an absence of Mrs. Martindale. And we do my best to give her a report. And, uh, so I'll do that now. Uh, once again, I was recognized earlier this morning. Congratulations, Southwestern Career Academy's Bell Maddox, joined the national champion for the twenty-twenty-three Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference in California, fellow won first place in promotional photography out of four hundred and fifteen, uh, competitors. And you heard all the amazing, uh, things that she did get there. In addition to Bella, congratulations to our Career Academy students who competed at the, uh, Business Professionals Academy National Competition. Marisa Sue, Evelyn Bryant, Kaylee O'Hara, Samira Abdell, Kadir, Mia Melendez, uh, Brooke, Brooke Dunn, Aiden Scott, of course, Bell Maddox. Luckily, they came home with a national championship and promotional photography, earned four industry credentials along with numerous other certifications, and students served in delegate roles, participated in a national showcase. Next, we want to congratulate the early childhood education students who completed at the, competed at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Regional Competition in March and qualified for the state competition last month. We have some great future educators in the ranks among the back group. Uh, next, we want to congratulate the following students from the Southwestern City School District who are, uh, recently honored at the OCC Journalism Awards Event. Central Crossing High School students, Mrs. Fuller's Yearbook Program, Chesney Mullins, Eddie Mays, and Amy Thompson. Franklin Heights students, Sheldon, Miss, in Miss Sheldon's Yearbook Program, Audrey Ammon, Emerson S., A-Step, Tyler Leeds, and Cesar Lopez Medina Junior. And Westland High School students in Mrs. Spooner's area writing class, Harmony Douglas, Bree Murphy, Cheyenne Worrell, and Emma Zeal. Next, thirteen Air Force Senior ROTC cadets from Westland High School recently traveled to Marietta College to participate in the Vietnam Veterans Homecoming Event sponsored by the Washington County Veteran Services Organization. The three hundred and fifty local veterans, students, and families in attendance were treated to, uh, Westland Cadets performing color guard performance and presenting and posting the colors, an honor guard presentation of the thirteen folds flag folding ceremony, presentation of the folding flag, uh, to the Vietnam Veteran of the Year recipient, and a, uh, performance of the cadets, uh, retiring the colors. They received a standing ovation, so we want to congratulate these Cougars who put on an awe-inspiring set of performances at each of these ceremonial celebrations. Next, congratulations to the Golden Falcons of Franklin Heights on a rating of one in Class B of OMEA State Competition. And congratulations to Grove City High School, symphonic band on their one rating from OMEA State Competition as well. Next, uh, Westland High School, uh, Westland High School Key Club students attended the sixty-fourth Annual George Media Awards hosted by the United Way of Central Ohio and the Central Ohio Labor Council, AFL-CIO. Uh, these Westland High School students were presented with a youth services award, uh, earned by the class of twenty-twenty, but were unable to be awarded in person due to COVID-nineteen cancellation that year. So we want to congratulate the Westland Key Club, uh, for their community service past and present. Um, I got to attend that event. It was really great because my daughter was part of class twenty-twenty-two, couldn't be there. But I got to hang out with all those great kids who are part of it this year and, and they just had a great time, so. Uh, congratulations to the Southwestern City School District Communications Department, who went, uh, five for five at last month's Ohio Public Relations Annual Spring Conference in categories the department was eligible for, taking home four Mark of Excellence Awards and one Mark of Distinction Award for the district for their efforts in highlighting classroom initiatives, academic successes, and community updates for the Southwestern City School District communities. Congratulations to Evan and his team. And finally, we want to take a moment, uh, to thank the entirety of our Southwestern City School District staff during this staff appreciation week, as I mentioned earlier today. Um, and as introduced by Dr. Lusher at last month's Board of Education meeting. Whether it's driving a bus, serving a meal, administrative maintenance work, it takes the village to facilitate education and raise a child. And we're so thankful for all of our staff who do all the work that they do, um, uh, every day. Okay, great. Read college notes, don't want to get ahead of myself. Next, um, so that concludes my report to myself. Uh, and so now we'll go to, uh, items for action, just one operational management, Mr. Bosso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under, um, this one operational management tonight, we have six items for action. The first will be the revised permanent appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Um, it recommended the Board of Education approve the revised appropriations, permanent appropriations. Item number two is the investment financial statements for April two thousand twenty-three, exhibit X-two and X-three. Um, it recommended the board, um, I'm sorry, it's, um, recommended that in accordance with section one-three-five-point-one-four of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approved the April investments and cash positioning reports for the month of April two thousand twenty-three as submitted. Total investments, three hundred and sixty-two million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Interest earnings month to date will be one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-three cents. Interest earnings year to date, six million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Interest rates vary from point zero one-six to five point zero seven percent. Um, item number three will be the payment of bills, exhibit X-four. It recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of April two thousand twenty-three. Um, item number four, the donations, exhibit X-five. It's recommended the Board of Education accept the donations of seven thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars as detailed in exhibit X-five and authorize letters of appreciation to all those donors. Thank you so much for that. Um, item number five, the authorization to pay the bills in accordance with section fifty-seven oh-five-point-four-one of the Ohio Revised Code, exhibit X-six. It's recommended the Board of Education authorize treasurer to pay the bills for April, which were not processed in accordance with fifty-seven oh-five-point-four-one of the Ohio Revised Code. Uh, the last item will be the approval of the five-year forecast, which you presented as usual, very eloquently. It recommended the Board of Education approve the five-year forecast as presented. After reviewing these items, Mr. President, I move them for passage.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson, any discussion? You're none, roll call, please. Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell. Yes. Next, under items for action, we have a policy with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, President Caldwell. We have fifteen items for action under policy this evening. We have, this is the second reading of two new, one, uh, replacement, two deleted, and ten revised policies. They are all listed for you in the agenda, having reviewed them. I recommend for passage, you move to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We have a second.
Second, second, oh, go for it, Mr. Bosso.
All right, Mr. Schreiner.
Second, Schreiner.
All right. Um, any discussion on these items? I, I have one question and actually appreciate, uh, the parent spoke today, um, on the AI. Uh, Dr. Bosso, I don't know if you're the first to answer this or not, but, um, you know, AI does seem to be a growing technology that we probably don't fully understand yet, uh, as a society and how much it's growing, how much it's learning. Can you talk about any confines that are, I understand that when we adopt policies like this, we're trying to put ourselves in accordance with law so that we are following state standards for these things. Um, but, uh, it's a parent's question and my own curiosity.
Sure. Yeah, no, um, so that's based off Neil's recommendation, uh, in terms of the, like, the materials that we use now. They're expanding strategies they use when they're like electronic media. So that's to say for us, to make sure we have correct parameters or protections in place. So, you know, twenty-five years ago, when it was the internet, we were just getting email. Now it's expanded to include that because those, um, strategies or those resources are now including those types of materials. We are nowhere near any kind of like implementation piece, that language is there to save her. So that, that is included in what we've had in the past in terms of any access to tech, uh, through our technology resources.
Any other special questions? You're done, we, uh, Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale. Oh, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Uh, next, under items for action, under, we're back to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, President Caldwell. The first item this evening is the first reading of the Mathematics Course of Study in twelve. And it is listed in its entirety as an addendum. Uh, we also have the first reading of the English Language Arts Grades System, seven to twelve textbooks and instructional materials. Those are also listed. And we have the first reading of adult grades, five to twelve textbooks and instructional materials. Having spent a lot of time reviewing these three items, I moved to the passage.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We have a second.
A second there.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Uh, any discussion? You're none, roll call, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell. Yes. All right, next, under items for action, facilities development, back to Ms. Bosso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under, uh, facilities development, we do have one item for action. It's a, uh, recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached addendums to the lease agreement with the city of Grove City or the Brook Park Middle School building. As Don eloquently, he should be like a car salesman or something. Nice job, Don. And I move this for passage.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Do we have a second?
Second, Schreiner.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. Any discussion? All I want to say is we appreciate the work that the Gerson Food Pantry does for this community, uh, as well as the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. We, you, every day are out there making sure our families have what they need. A lot of those families are, are students and, and, you know, students can't learn when they're hungry. Uh, we do our part to get to school, but we know you're doing your part, Bishop Holmes. Thank you. Roll call, please. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell. Yes. Next, under, uh, action items, and still, uh, schools, students, and community, which I will be doing for this one. The board agenda tonight for, uh, this evening for students' school security, we have seven action items. Number one, Central Crossing High School NJRTC cadets will travel to Chillicothe, Ohio. Uh, next, uh, ten cadets will travel to Edinburgh, uh, Edinburgh, Indiana. Um, second across, third is Central Crossing High School cheer student athletes will travel to Ohio Northern University. Uh, next, Central Crossing High School football will travel to Ohio Wesleyan University. Grove City High School boys basketball will travel to Marshall University. Next, Grove City High School boys basketball will travel to San Francisco, Ohio. Next, Grove City High School students will travel to the Ohio University. Um, these, uh, these, all these programs are done outside of school hours and, uh, at additional expense of the district. I have reviewed these items, I recommend them for passage.
Second then.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bosso. Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Yes. Next is our personnel report. Next, Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you, President Caldwell. On the board agenda this evening are seven personnel items involving eight hundred and ninety-three persons. This includes eighteen certificated and administrated resignations, nine certificated changes in employment status. One hundred and fifty-three certificated employments, seven classified resignations, nine classified changes in employment status. Twelve classified employments, and six hundred and eighty-five certificated reemployments. After reviewing these action items, now I move them for passage, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a roll call, please?
Mr. Schreiner. Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo. Yes.
Mr. Caldwell. Yes. We have no public participation relative to non-agenda items tonight. So let's have a discussion from the board.
Mr. President, a point of personal privilege. Something that many of us attend, and I guess I want to say Mama Mia. Our arts programs are wonderful at our high schools and our middle schools. And many of us attend those, looking at the board. And we have just experienced a number of musicals that were put on, as well as plays this year. And, and not only, not only that, just our arts programs in general are to be complimented. But I'm still humming and dancing to Mama Mia tunes in my head. So. I just want to mention, we're so proud of our arts programs. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Next, on our, next, we're going to. Reset, I'm sorry. It is recommended the Board of Education adjourn to executive session, according to policy line through zero-one-six-six. To consider the appointment and employment of a public employee, prepare for attorney negotiation for public employees. Investigations of complaint against a public employee, it matters to be kept confidential under federal law or regulations by or state statute. Motion to adjourn to executive session?
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, second?
Second, Schreiner.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Bozo.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We don't anticipate any additional action items. Once we get back from executive session, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Even that reported out lots of the evening. So thank you guys for coming back.